Hey hey people! And welcome to another Elden Ring Let's Play video on YouTube! Why did I say it like that? You know where you are. You're not accidentally on YouTube. It doesn't matter. Nothing matters. We just completed a dungeon. The, uh... Cliff Bottom Catacombs. It's time to move on. Our reward from the Cliff Bottom Catacombs was a... Was a fat sultry nothing. So... It's time to leave. It's time... To go. Did I pick up anything from you lot? You fetid puppets? I dunno. You know... Whatever you sellin', I don't need to buy it. We're done here. Goodbye. And my beloved horse could use some beans. Here, have some... Have a frozen raisin. You'll love it. Look at that. Full health. Full health for my horse. Nothing but the best. Nothing... But the best. Oh, it's foggy now. Delightful. Turtle spotted. Thick turtle neck meat. Get a little bud. Get some birds. One day I'll craft some arrows out of all these feathers we get. But I'm really just doing it for the pickled fowl feet. Hmm... Wolves on top of that ruin. I seen them. Hey buddy. Hey! Looks like the weather's cleared up. It's wolf o'clock. It's wolf o'clock. But there's no time. There's no time for little guys. Don't you fall off now. I'll follow ya. Oh, it's so hard. Sometimes the camera gives you a little trouble. Alright. Done with the wolves. Now what delicious morsel were you guarding? Beast blood? Come on! I didn't want this. What is this trash? Alright, so we have three different ways to go. We've got a battlefield and a... And like a crevasse, a deep be sure. We've got this top right path. I'm choosing the top right path for the moment. Actually, where's the... There's a big... What I should do... Is come back here... But actually beeline for the map for this place. Because then I can see what I'm doing. And where all the good bits are, you know? So let's do that. We've got a little bit of a trek, but I'll come right back here, I promise. We've got some ruins. We've got a secret gate... In the purified ruins. Very secret. What have we here? Nothing? The purified ruins have a fat lot of nothing? Something's aggroed me, I can't pull the map up. Hmm... No other ruins have a fat lot of nothing. Hey, look! A guy!
Hello? Is someone there?
It's me!
Would you donate any shabriary grapes in your possession to me? I'm on a pilgrimage, in search of the distant light. And when I eat one of those grapes... I can feel the light in the back of my eyes.
Uh, I'll get you one. I'll get you that grape, girl. Don't you worry. Now, uh... I don't have a grape. And there doesn't appear to be anything in these ruins. Oh, look, there's a dog. Do you have grapes, doggo? No. There's a... A big fort. Hmm... And there's a teleport path. Oh, and a little... And a mushroom. In fact, five little mushrooms. Wowee. Well, aside from that teleport pad, and I'm not gonna mess with that... Just this moment in time. Uh, I don't see a grape, and I don't see anything to do in that... Delightful little ruins. So... Let's go get our map and return this away. Before starting this recording, I thought to myself... Oh, look at this! Is it Mr. Grape's? Oh, he's... He's... He's holding his eyes. "Come out, one and all, from the darkness underground. Let us offer unto the maid in our eyes." Alright. This place got eyes in it. I can tell. I'm an eyewitness after all. Oh! Oh! I amuse even myself sometimes. Alright. Let's get in there. Some runes, very nice, very good. Oh, he had a little horn. He didn't remember to blow his little horn, and now he's dead. Little boy blue. I don't remember that nursery rhyme. Hmm... Look at these scrungly dogs. The Dark Souls dogs have never been so scrungly as they are in this game. Alright, what are we working with here? Just some guys? Wait, hang on. I'm a parry lord, just lemme... Lemme get it. Thank you. So that does 536 damage. What does my misery chord do? 882, very nice, very nice. Whatever, I'm just gonna smack you around a bit with my dagger. I don't have to wait for every parry. Ooh, our cuckoo glintstones are now going to storage, wowee. Hello? Look at this. Look at this secret base. The secret bunker.
Colonel! Colonel, I found the secret bunker.
That's a terrible David hater. Oh my... Grapes! Shabriary grape. We got it. And a two fingers heirloom. Raises faith. A talisman engraved with the legend of the two fingers. Fingers cannot speak, yet these were eloquent. Persistently did they wriggle, spelling out mysteries in the air. Thus did we gain the words... The words of our faith. Sick. Grand. Do you have anything to say now that I have your quote-unquote "grapes"? Nope! Why can't I summon my horse? Let me horse up.
Hello?
Yeah, yeah, I got you grapes. Yep.
You're not like the others who give me grapes, are you?
No, cuz they're not my grapes.
Howling wordlessly, they gently stroke my eyes. Their frail fingers, emaciated. Yet still, they give me the grapes. But you... Seem... Somehow... Firma.
Firma.
You are most kind indeed. May the blessing of the fingers be upon you. You are most kind...
Okay, alright, I'll catch you later, I guess. Hey, a lobster! How hard could a lobster be? Let's find out. That's not a lot of damage. That's a big jumpy attack. Okay, three fully charged R2s got it to stagger. Okay, we can't make it. Let's see how jumping attacks do. That boy's trouble. I don't like him at all. Okay, I do not have the correct pattern for fighting that guy, no sir. Hey, no flying. The map of Liurnia East. Where is... I suppose it... Is it a key item? Yes. "The majority of Liurnia, known for its vast forests and ever-present fog, is sinking into a lake. The eastern coast is home to a high road running north and south." Map of the Weeping Peninsula. "The peninsula, to Limgrave's south, is named for its unceasing rainfall, redolent of lament." Map of Siophra River and Environs. "Two great rivers flow beneath the lands between the Siophra and the Aincel." "The vast region is said to be the grave of civilizations that flourished before the Erid tree." Well, yippie, look at us. Uh, let's return to... The path we were on. Yes, sir. Kinda cool that the downstairs in one of these ruins was hidden under some boards and other breakable crap. I saw like a gazebo down there. Do I want to check out this? Travel to another location, sure. If not now, then when? Hmm? If not now, then when? And we can always come back, probably. Liurnia of the Lakes. We are all the way out on the west side. Well, they got that rune gate up. Lemme in. "You cannot proceed without a glintstone key." Yeah, but what if I... Hi-yah! No, attacking the gate does nothing. Okay. Meeting place map. "You found a simple map. Check in inventory." Meeting place map. Meeting place map. Check in inventory. But where... Is it in? You'd think it'd be in keys. It's not with all the maps. Ooh, it's in my tutorial messages. Okay. "Simple map showing a meeting place. Simple map found on a corpse, seems to point to a meeting place. The man it came from surely desired one, the sole means of gaining entrance into the academy, a glintstone key." That appears to be an island to the west of the big tower and the north of a little sunken town. Does Marika have anything new to say to me? It's been a while. No, she sure don't. She sure don't. Okay. Do I have anything new for the... I never remember to use the wondrous physic. And we don't really do the big charge attack, so why don't we do something else here? Boost faith, boosts strength... Significantly negates damage. Yeah, let's try that one. I think that gives you like a one-time bubble shield, something like that. Uh, and look, we've got a... We've got a town to go into, but, uh... I think... I think I don't wanna do that yet. I think I wanna keep exploring where we were at. Which is here. Alright. So we have this big battlefield. What does the glow man have to say? "The puppets besiege us." Well, this seems like a critical path. Let's try this way. We got blue men. We got a lot of blue men. Do the blue men hate me? They're about to. I'm going to assume these are puppets? I don't know. Ooh, this guy's cool! He's... He's a magic giant! Golly gee! Wow, they let you do magic, mister? That's incredible! Should've switched to my misery chord for that critical hit, but I didn't. Whoop! He's gonna do a big blast! Look at that! You did it, buddy! You did a big blast! And we're all really proud of you. Ah! Oh, the axe. I don't need the axe out anymore. Let's get rid of that. Well... That was a lot of guys. A loose cern. Ooh, I remember using a loose cern at some point? In prior games, of course? Not here. I've never been here before. Loose cern, loose cern. "This polearm features a hard, sharpened beak-like spike attached to its head, designed to pierce armor. Though designed mainly as a thrusting weapon, its long handle can be utilized to get around the enemy's guard with a sideward sweeping attack." I hear... Do I hear... One of them crystal ball lizard guys? Sometimes I can't tell if it's... If it's one of them guys, or if it's my tinnitus. I don't hate this. Ooh! That's a nice... Powerful hit. It's a blow for the ages. Well, let's have a look-see out here. We got quite the siege having taken place. And some very ugly flame heads. They look pretty flamey. We have more war stuff on the left, but I'm curious what I just cut through to. Nice runes. What is down here? Crystal dart? What is crystal dart? "Uses FP throw to inflict magic damage. A golem crafter employed a similar crystal tool." Interesting. I'm gonna put on my lantern... Into this foggy, foggy place. Looks like this road goes directly to the, uh... To the main city we were just at. Ah-ha! I see you there. You cannot hide. Ah! It's an explosive stone. You tricked me. What have you gotta say, glowy? "Reilucario. Hollowed hall, dedicated to the study of magic. Why shut Jojo's to me? Am I barred from dawning the crown of stone?" Stone! Hey, a bear. Hey buddy. Gimme your bones! I needs them. I was certain I was going to sneeze. But then I didn't. Oh! The pain of the sneeze going back inside, oh, I feel it. My bones. I can feel it in my bones. Oh! Ah, looks like we've come out above the... Above the foggy lake. That looks gross, I wonder what's down there? Ooh, is this a proper rune bear? I think it is. Though at my current power level, it'll barely be a threat. It knew I was there somehow! Hey! That's not fair. Barely fair. Alright then, mister. Come at me! Tell me you don't come at me that hard, I... Wow, you got a big hitbox when you do your charging move. Yep, I can't jump over your charging move. I can dodge it, though. If I'm a cool enough guy... I'm not a cool enough guy, it's so fast! He's so strong! Just gotta keep abusing my jump attacks. Come on, you can't do two super fast charges in a row, that's not fair! I have problems with the fairness of this bear. He's barely fair. Did I make that joke already? I mean, it's not a joke, it's more of a pun, but... Barely a joke. Oh my god! I hate you so much! I just... I just need a second... To drink up, okay? Now I feel better. I cannot... Okay, so if I do anything against this guy when he's not... In a recovery state, he's just going to dodge sideways and hit me with his super fast body slam. What a dick! You're a dick, you know that? I don't care for you. I don't care for you one bit, and he gave me poop. My reward for all of that was poop. I don't know how to fight those guys. I mean, I feel like I do know how to fight them now, I just have to... Keep my block up... And wait for big openings, cuz if there's a small opening, he'll just dodge to the side and hit me with a... With a silly fast... Big damage move. Where he just charges you with his face, and it hurts more than a claw swipe. But hey, that's learning. That's Liurni-ing. I'm sorry, I'm sorry for that one. That's... That was too much. Okay. We're pretty close... To another map shrine. What are you guys? You do cartwheels? That's sick! Their heads look like the rebirth maggots. What is happening here? Who's shooting me? Why am I moving so slowly? Look at these little toad-looking guys. With their shalalies. Alright, gimme. Liurnia North. Lost grace. Okay. Here's the big Liurnia map. Now... Finger reader crown. Where am I? I'm here. Feel like I wanna keep exploring the eastern reaches. Where did I come from? Where did I go? We're just gonna head back east. There's really no rhyme or reason. I just feel like... Maybe that tower's got some good stuff in it, I dunno. There's plenty of time, I'm in no rush. Does anyone else rush? You better not be. I mean, you're watching a YouTube video, if you're in a rush, you're in the wrong place. Silver pickled fowl foot. Three of them, yummy. Num 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 num. Did I activate this? Sure did. Okay. So we've got an option to keep going up. Oh, look at this! Hey, buddy? I am here. I just gave you one. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You can feel the light in back of your eyes. Another grape? Well, the other two times, there's been someone like right next to you a glowy man offering grapes. Uh... Hmm. I don't see a glowy man. Wait! Hey! I see a nighttime guy. Well, look at you. Look at you, Mr. Knight's Cavalry thinks he's all that with his horse. Why don't I fight you on my horse? I don't need to. I bet I can parry you. You seem very parryable. Maybe. Not the stomp, of course. Not the, not the big body check. Oh, I'm starting this fight with not a whole lot of crumbs and tears. That's unfortunate. Who's trapped who on the rocks here? It was I! I who had trapped you on the rocks, sir! And I am the parry lord. You weren't prepared for lord of parry. Yippee! Ash of War. Ice spear. Cool. Um... I beg you, my loyal viewers, if you know that I am missing knight fights and there's like another knight guy here or something, please, please let me know. I, I'm not playing online. I don't get to see all the messages saying try knight. Uh, I'm just, I'm just me. I'm doing my best here. And that was a complete surprise to me. That was novel. Mmm, stimulation. Alright. It's wolf o'clock, I know. And I'm not willing to just run around exclusively at night. I mean, there could be daytime-only fights for all I know, though that has not been the case thus far. I don't know. I'm hoping there are more nighttime fights than just copy-pasted knights cavalry and deathbirds. That'd be kinda lame if that were the case. Ooh, look at this big cathedral! Look at that! Golly! I killed your whole family. I killed your pups. And now I'm gonna kill you. Oh, you might get a good... You might hurt my horse. But you'll never get me. Thanks for the flesh. Now... There's a... The left path here, I'm connect, or the right path I'm connecting up with, so we have some exploration to the south to do. But right now, the beast eye quivers. Well, well. Ooh! Doth I spy with my little eye a mariner? Did, did I give you, I did give you the holy blade. Well, well. Hey, buddy? Where you going? Mr. Tibia Man. Oh, there he's, there he is. Look at you! With your little horn. Think you're all that. Oh no, there'll be no summoning. Need to let my stamina regen. Oh, he's doing a big boat slam. Oh, you almost got me there, buddy. Don't worry. You'll hit me next time. Look at that boat slam. Wow! Hey, my holy's wore off. Don't worry. I got more in me. That looks like a big bonus boat slam. Yummy! Can I repost you? No, it doesn't look like. Gimme that death root. Num 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 num. Skeletal Bandit Ashes, huh? Skeletal Bandit Ashes. Use to summon the spirit of a skeletal bandit. This is the spirit of a bandit who lives in death and will continue to rise again until properly finished off. After the night of the plot, Deathroot appeared in the Lands Between, and those who live in death soon followed. Well, that's neat. That's cool. We'd like to see it. Yes, we do. Oh, and there's a little little graveyard here where I bet more guys, more skeletal bone men are gonna come up and be like, "Hey!" Yep. I seen it. I seen this movie. Okay. We've got a big church. It appears to open that way, but maybe there's another way up here. I don't know. Let's find out. Also, maybe there are some, uh... Some more dead guys round here. Nope. Doesn't look like it. I don't know if you just have blue juice or if you've got some kinda spell in you, so you have to die, I'm afraid. Just blue juice. Fair enough. Okay, well, we can't get into the condo this way. Alright, so there's exploration to the south to do. But I feel like continuing on north. I'm just pointing it out with my voice. Because I won't remember otherwise. I remember things better if I say them, and also, you know, people are using this as second screen content. At least one person is using this as second screen content. And hey, I got you, buddy. I'll let you know what's happening. Artist's shack, ooh. Resurrection painting, this... Hmm, I wonder if this is from, so it looks like we're looking at the big castle from the side, and it's a graveyard. I wonder if it's this one, right here. No. No, if this is... If this is supposed to be... This tower thing is supposed to be it. We might assume that this is the tower, and the point of land would be like here. Maybe even on this peninsula, there'd be like a little grave or something. Okay, we'll keep it in mind. We'll keep it in mind. Got ourselves another lost grace. Climb around on some rooftops. Hmm. How about this way? Instant death? Oh yeah, that looks pretty instant death-y to me. That looks like the way into the big tower, though, doesn't it? Unless there's a way to double back over these rocks, that is. There might be. Ooh, we got some magma guys. Oh, it's butterfly town. Right on. Why is it giving me scary music? I don't do well with scaries. Got a little war camp going on. That's good. And another ash of not ash, but another grace off in the distance there. That seems good. Ooh, we got Mr. Blood. Briars of Sin times one. What the hell is Briars of Sin? Is that a weapon art? Is it an incantation? No, it's a spell. Summon thorns from a whorl of own blood. Neat. I like it. Whorl. I also like the word whorl. Nobody can see me if I crouch. Hey! I'm still crouching. You can't see nothing. I'm invisible like a shadow. Gimme your clothes! And your mace. Give me everything you got. Or nothing. Give me nothing as a, as an alternative. Flame cleanse me. I can use it. Alleviates buildup and cures poison and scarlet rot. One of the incantations of the fire monks creates a fire within, ooh, that burns away toxins, alleviates poisons and scarlet rot buildup, and cures these elements. This incantation leaves the caster with subtle burns, a reminder that they must fear the flame. Neat. Fire spur me. Let's, uh... Where is that one? Oh, this one just keeps going. Cool. Fire spur me. Smoldering butterflies. Alright, this war camp seems complete, I guess. Yep, looks good to me. Let's see here. We got more fire slimes. Got a little chariot. A little flame chariot. With a little guy driving it. Misery Chord, go! Uh oh. Didn't they say like the chimneys on these things were vulnerable or something like that? What about the guy driving it? Fire blossom. The guy driving it seems pretty vulnerable. Never pass up an opportunity for flame butterflies. You need them. Get those in your stomach. Num num num. Alright, we got a grace touch. Somehow I've got another thirty thousand smackaroos to spend, and oh! My controller has just run out of juice. Wow, where's my... Where's my USB C? Oh, it's under my... It's under this bag. Oh, god. Ah! I'm sorry, I shouldn't, I shouldn't breathe heavily in frustration into the microphone. That was probably unpleasant, and I apologize. I apologize greatly for my transgressions. Ooh! We got a little yurt. I mean, it's not little. No, it's not a yurt cuz it's made of stone, but it has that vibe to it, you know? It has that temporary structure vibe. Alright, well, we can go down, but there's a more more impressive way down these little steps here. Which seems like it might also go to the big tower. Ooh. Nice flame sorceries, Mr. Pyromancer. Hang on, let me fight you for realsies. You gotta... Yeah. Yeah, you do. Gimme, uh, gimme your main robes. I'm looking to switch up. Monk's Flame Mace. Strength and dex only. Battle hammer made to resemble flickering flames. Signature weapon of the fire monks who hail from the mountaintops of the giants. The unique strong attack rouses fiery combative spirit. Oh, he's, he stomps his foot. Ah, my fiery competitive spirit! Is this a bleed weapon? No. It just looks all bleeder-y. He stomps his foot cuz he's real mad. I, I act like that when my foot goes to sleep. He stomps his foot because he's real mad. I, I act like that when my foot goes to sleep. I like the look of it, though. Nice, a nice simple weapon that looks like a big Christmas tree. I think we'll upgrade this and use it. Not, you know, not in place of our wonderful scythe, but, uh... Just... Just to have. Maybe, maybe I'll put the holy weapon art on it for skella bone men. That seems like a way to do it. A way to go about things. There's no way it just lets us into this sick tower, right? It's going to be like, first you must collect the three nuts of Zanzibar land. Ooh, it's all blue. We come to the bluest tower. Carian study hall, alright. Oh celestial globe, transmit to posterity the wisdom of the moon and stars, and obscure forever, the transgressions of the princess. Sure bud, I know what all that means. I'm, I'm wise. I wonder what the soft cap on vigor is? I'm gonna alt-tab real quick and open up the Google. Soft cap vigor. Elden Ring's the first suggestion. Vigor has two soft cap points, forty and sixty. I'm not generally a Google gamer, but you gotta know your soft caps. Vigor has two soft cap points, forty and sixty, with HP, fire, defense, and immunity, diminishing returns after both points. Cool. Alright, very good. Uh... That's fine. Just don't bring it above sixty, I got that much. You'll never regret having more health up to the soft cap. That's what I know, in my heart of hearts. Oh, it's letting us go up! Yippee! Yahoo! Not up very far, but yippee yahoo nonetheless. Hell yeah! Whoa! Magic ambush, are you guys here like to welcome me in, or no, huh? No, there'll be no welcome, I understand. I am, of course, a filthy outsider, here to despoil all of your, your tomes and your learning. That's true. That is why I'm here. Wow, learning ain't shit, though. What the, Preceptor Murum? Preceptor Miriam? And she just left. Cool. Oh, and she's firing stuff at, she's firing her big laser at me. You think I care if you fire your laser at me? You think it matters, huh? She won't get away with this. Yeah, go ahead. Cast your big dumb magic bow, see if I care. Ooh, she teleported away again. Where'd you go this time, buddy? Carian glintstone staff, did she go back there? Nope. Carian glintstone staff. Staff embedded with blue glintstone, one of the two types of carian staff. Given to sorcerers that they might enact the role of knight. Enhances carian sword sorceries. Cool. Onward and upward, lads. Slowly, slowly upward. Is there any cool platform at the top of this? Nope. I thought it was worth checking. Oh, I see you there. Oh, it explodes now! Ladder? Real ladder? Real ladder. I keep hearing like a doorbell. But I think that's the video game and not my home. Oh, I got you, though. Goodbye! Precept this. Magic downpour. Okay, I, I do not have access to my horse. But I feel like I should. So are these magic peasants, the puppets? They don't seem very good. Why, they're hardly an issue at all. This is where I came in, yep. And there is a... Ladder over here. Well, hello. Ooh, there's little rats on the balcony. Little radicus's. Little ratzos. Little ratty bo baddies. I'll stop. I don't know what's gotten into me. Goodbye! Let's see here. I don't see anything to fall down on. Whoa! But the rats can fall down on me. Ha ha ha, sneaky, sneaky. Uh... Do I see anything? This would be like, this is the classic Dark Souls... Look around when you're above something and you'll find a place to fall down, but, uh, I don't see anything of that nature here. I see a guy barely holding on. What's up with that? I'm gonna try shooting him. Nope. Nothing. Okay. It was a fat lot of nothing, never mind. Yes, come to me! My ratty. Little ratty. Before I started this stream, I said to myself, "I don't need a glass of water. I'm not parched." But I'm really feeling it now. Cerulean seed talisman. Boosts FP restoration from flask of cerulean tears. A cerulean colored talisman, pattern after an erd tree seed, boosts FP restoration from blah blah blah. The erd tree was once perfect and eternal, and thus it was believed that erd tree seeds could not exist. Oh my, I've only just realized the time, we've been going longer than normal. Over an hour, my word, my word. Surely this isn't everything that's in this giant study hall, right? That can't be. That can't be. All that's up here in the rafters is just... Just a, a trash trinket? I don't see any more... Ways up? I don't see anything down on these chandeliers? Are these chandeliers even jumpable? Let's find out. Yeah, you can get down on them, maybe... Maybe that's what you do? Surely not. Well, there's one little spirit guy left, and does he seem more blue than the other ones, Abu di Abu Dai? Yeah, well. Hmm. Well, I've gotta check then, right? I mean... Either there's a way forward... That I didn't see. Alright, I'm gonna try jumping on one of these. And we'll see about the efficacy of this plan. I don't know what I'm hoping to accomplish. Yeah, they're just, they're just solid? They're just solid little guys. Huh. Hmm, surely that's not everything. Oh. This headdress comes with some little earrings, I never noticed that before. They look almost like hair earrings, but that can't be. That'd be weird. What about, what about this side of the... No, nothing here either. Well, this might be a dead end for the moment, there's certainly no way up to... Well, whatever it is is going on over there. This appears to be it. Well, I guess I can say we killed a... Quote-unquote boss in that proctor. That invigilator. Take that. No one will stop me from cheating on my Rea Lucario tests now. Well, I am... I'm stumped? I'm mystified? There appears to be no way forward? There are no secrets in this study hall? I mean, there's like, there's light shining behind this crap? But... I can't knife my way through it? Hmm. On the very top rung of this, oh, look at that little... That's interesting. There is a staircase... Which goes up and up and seems to... Seems like it either drops a ladder, yeah, yeah, look at that. I can see it now. This is a dead end. Because a ladder... Probably drops down right here? I see a place for a ladder, unless it's invisible? No. I think, I think this just descends. Unless there's, unless it's, it's hidden path bullshit? Certainly not that way, though. Well, okay. Hmm. Wait a minute, is that... Is that a switch? No way, right? No, it is not so simple. I thought I was a very clever boy for just a moment here, so this is a... This is as good as place as any to leave you with this thought of me not being a clever boy, um... Right? Yeah? Yeah. This is, this is my longest recording yet, probably. Uh, I hope this is... Decently... Entertaining to watch, now that I don't know where I'm going and don't know what I'm doing. Things will be a little slower and a little less, uh, zippy, poppy, you know? But... That's alright. We're in no rush. We're just in a mood to study and chill and enjoy our second screen content. But if I could entreat you for a moment, in this... End-video call to action, to leave your second screen and go to your first screen and give me, uh, you know, a comment and a like and all that good stuff, the... Interaction really helps. Move things along. Like Metamucil, but for your YouTube. With that horrible thought, I now leave you. Uh, goodnight, goodbye, and have a good one. Metamucil. For YouTube.